Okay, this meeting is being held as an electronic meeting pursuant to and in compliance with the City of Richmond Ordinance 2020-093. And the school board's resolution approved on April 20th, 2020. The notice of the meeting stated that it would be a virtual meeting and it would be live streamed on the school division's Facebook page. The public could view it there and the link was provided. And the agenda was also posted to Board Docs and the link was provided. Let's see.
Thank you, ma'am clerk.
You're welcome. Let's do your roll call. Give me one second. Mr. Young?
Present.
Ms. Dorr?
Here.
And Mr. Barlow?
Here.
You have a quorum of your committee. The next item is to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2019, November 12th, 2019, and January 20th, 2020, and March 5th, 2020 meetings. I did distribute those and they were on Board Docs. I did not receive any edits or changes.
Angie, may I interrupt just real briefly? Do we, what's the protocol relevant to roll call? Do we solely request of board members or also our citizen committee members?
Your citizen committee members, thank you. And I do apologize. I do not have that list in front of me. Mr. Williams, I see him.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And I do not see any of your other citizen members present.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young. Do you want to go back and approve your minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
You just need a motion, please.
But I do have a point of clarification then. Do we have, do we have a quorum then to approve the minutes?
How many members are on your committee?
Well, we have one gentleman depart, but roster includes... We have Steve Panchum, Deborah Corliss, Lawrence Williams, we have Richard Rumrell. And the balance are my colleagues on the school board.
And it's four of you on the board on this committee?
Correct, so eight.
Eight. We can defer to the end of the meeting. I was in board or committee mode. I did forget about your community, so I apologize for that.
No worries. Okay, we'll just defer that to later.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair. So Ms. Burke is a committee member, if I'm not mistaken, and then Ms. Page is just attending in this case?
Correct.
So are you saying I don't have to be at this meeting?
We are honored to have you, Dawn. I was just hoping you'd help with the number.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Next up on the agenda, we included a brief update relevant to facilities and understand Mr. Hathaway's on the phone call. Bobby, thank you. Can you just provide, we don't want to spend too much time on this, but just provide any update relevant to the VPC properties? If there's, if there are any pertinent updates relevant to those properties and/or if there's anything in the bigger picture of things, bigger picture of things that we need to be advised of relevant to vacant property committee, all in regards to facilities, of course.
Honestly, with COVID striking us, it's been difficult for us to really make any progress there. But I will say, Altria, we started to perform some maintenance, much needed maintenance over there in that particular building. But the other buildings, we haven't been able to do anything there as far as the savings, their utility savings. I think we've seen about a $650,000 savings from last year. Relevant to the other facilities and the way we're operating everything right now. We tried to reduce the building occupancy to realize the savings in the buildings as much as possible from the normal operation.
That, so the 650, that regards all of our, or all of our...
That's just not right. That's all, that's not just the vacant property committee, right?
Right. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hathaway and/or any discussion relevant to his update?
Mr. Young?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you want me to talk about this later, but we have had some further discussions with J. Sergeant Reynolds.
Yes, yes. Yeah, this, I think, yeah, I think now would be germane. Yeah, let's do it.
So I spoke with Dr. Pando, President of the university, and they are very enthusiastic about co-locating their new CTE campus at the Altria site. They have been over to visit a couple of times now, and I have asked them to draft an essence of term sheet for us to consider. I checked in with Dr. Pando about a week or two ago and expect that in the next couple of weeks. So once I've had a chance to digest that, would be happy to bring that back to the VPC and of course, to the entire board. What I expressed with Dr. Pando is, we are obviously not able to move forward as expeditiously as we would like on some of the pieces, but we don't want that to hold them back. And if they were to locate first and then we come in right behind them, that's fine as well. So I am excited that that work appears to be moving forward and there's a real opportunity for concrete partnership coming up soon.
Thank you for that. And it is extraordinarily exciting. Do we know, and this is really a question for Dr. Pando, but do we have any idea what their budget, what their appropriations from the Commonwealth may look like, given the circumstances and the, in reduction in aid to state fees? Have we been provided anything relevant to that at all, or?
No, I don't know. Not.
Any questions for the superintendent in regards, Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the update, Mr. Cameras. That's pretty, that's pretty exciting news that these conversations are progressing so well. Do you have any sort of broad strokes ideas of what we would expect with the forthcoming term sheet?
I don't. You know, we talked at a high level about, you know, the approximate amount of the building. So they were looking at, last conversation, about 70,000 square feet. Just for reference, the building is north of 250,000 square feet. So that leaves ample space for us to build out our high school. We, you know, talked only at the highest level about, you know, what sort of compensation RPS might receive. But we didn't get to numbers just yet, just talked in sort of general terms. But obviously, the term sheet would lay that out and something for us to consider. So I don't, I don't have a ton more at this point, other than the sort of in principle, the idea being they co-locate. Then we have our high school there and there's a sort of cooperative relationship on the two programs. And sort of a academic and career pipeline between the two programs and to the workforce. So all that should be laid out.
That sounds really awesome. And so it sounds like there may be, there's certainly plenty of room left over after J. Sergeant Reynolds moves in. Should they be able to do so after all? So do you think there's still more opportunity for additional partnerships? Perhaps I, I've kicked around the idea of whether a regional school may be able to locate there one day, such as Code RVA. I know that there, we're leasing space at Code RVA long-term. It isn't something that we've discussed on a deep level, but I have been curious to know whether it may be possible at some point in the more distant future to maybe trade some seats for some rent or something along those lines to make something like that work? Or, or to see if there may be other partnerships as well at the location that may be useful? Do you think that, obviously, there's square footage? Do we think that there would be sufficient additional infrastructure parking things of that nature to account for those types of programs? Or do you think it would largely make sense to have a J. Sergeant Reynolds partnership along with an RPS facility?
I mean, my priority is the RPS high-tech high school. But it's a large piece of property and I think we can be really creative with it. So I think there are opportunities to do additional things beyond that. So yeah, but I'd say everything, everything is on the table. I sort of see this as, let's lock down J. Sarge, then let's lock down some funding to do the renovation for the high school and then kind of see what's left.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Jason, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Page.
Okay, because it seemed like everything has, um, left my screen. It's not working. So my question, I'm very excited as well because their property is located directly in the heart of the 8th district. But, um...
Whose district?
So I'm hearing you talking about, hello?
Yes, I just was curious, whose district is that?
It's my district. The heart of the South Side, so I'm ecstatic about this partnership. You know, especially, you know, for RPS. But I think before, you know, we get too far down the road, it's definitely, you know, worth a board discussion. You know, with the partnership and the benefits that that building would have for our students and expanding vocational programs. I mean, I'm just really excited because it gives our students options.
Absolutely. And I want to reiterate, we won't take any, you know, concrete steps without much, much further discussion with the board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bobby, you don't by any chance, oh, I'm sorry. Bobby, you don't by any chance know what that square footage for the Chesfield CTE site, the old Cloverhill High School out there on Hall Street?
I'm not up to cover my head, Jonathan.
Yeah, right. I'm just trying to, I was trying to pull it up, trying to pull it up here just to provide some kind of context, but we can do that later.
Well, I know, Bobby, you know ballpark how big Huguenot is, right?
Yeah, Huguenot's 250,000 square feet.
So there you go. So this, this building is bigger than that.
Yeah.
Way bigger.
Yeah. What are the questions for either the superintendent or for our Director of Facilities? All right. Well, then, next up, I was hoping that we could just really briefly, or perhaps it shouldn't be brief, but revisit our conversation relevant to the metrics. Your call and Ms. Wilson has loaded said metrics on Board Docs. If, Lawrence, do you have access to that, RPS Board Docs and/or would you prefer I send that over to?
I would prefer you send it to me.
Here it comes now, sir.
Oh, my goodness. You're going to get technical on me. Okay.
All right, here it comes, sir. I just, just sent it to you. And everyone else, you have access. Yes, sir. Everyone has access to it via RPS Board Docs. And if everyone is there, maybe you can just kind of nod your head.
Should we do a screen share for the public as well?
Yes, sir. Angie, are you able to make that happen?
I can try. Matt Matthew, can you help me out?
Well, while they're pulling it up, it's essentially, it's a pie chart. And please, anyone jump in at any time, but the intent was to, the intent was to assess each of these properties in, in context of these different variables or elements. And when you see them, you should have, again, accessible, the RPS board, there we are. All right, so here is, so here is the, here's the pie chart that you see. You got three, essentially 20%, so it's weighted in favor of the market value, the cost of rehab, RPS use. And then you see the balance reserved for alternative use, tax credit opportunities. We incorporated, Ms. Burke, I believe that this was your recommendation, if I recall correctly, to incorporate that location value, which I think is really sound inclusion. And then we've got that all encapsulating other, which granted is really, is really broad. Just wanted to inquire of the group if there, if this looks right. If this, if this looks right, if you're comfortable with weighting it this way. If we're missing something, perhaps we're missing some elements that should be included? Or, or are we, are we missing the boat altogether? Any thoughts on this? And again, 50,000-foot view, this is essentially a, it's a tool to try to grade or gauge each of these properties that are in the purview of the committee and assess said property as it relates to what the purview of the committee is. Any thoughts? And if it's good, well, if everyone concurs.
I have a thought.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, so the purpose of this, if I'm not mistaken, is to have a common framework for which we assess.
Correct.
So I think generally, this is fine. However, I would love, and I think the pie chart is a fine summary, but I'd love to see a table with the actual percentages of how we're weighting it and an explanation of exactly, I think it could be a little bit subjective. For example, you know, what's the difference between market value and tax credit opportunity? And so to be really specific about the different definitions that we're using. And potentially, it's hard to tell because there aren't percentages on this. Just flagging that tax credit opportunity might be a little bit overweighted, in my opinion, but just because I'm not sure. There's a ton of tax credit opportunity. I think that would kind of go into the market value. But, but generally, I think it's, I think it's important for us to assess these buildings from a common framework. So I'm supportive of the overall approach.
Yeah, that's, that's really, that's helpful. That's, it's really helpful. I agree with all of that. I do, and thank you, Liz. I absolutely agree with you and I appreciate you bringing that up because that was one of the points that I wanted to make and I forgot to say it. I do think we need to build out a little, at least a little bit more of a description relevant to what we mean when, I mean, obviously, cost of rehab arguably pretty self-explanatory, but some of these other, like RPS use, et cetera, alternative use. Any other, any other thoughts on, on that? Do we do that?
Jonathan?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question regarding the tax credit option. Now, I know is, tax credit option is that it's clearly laid out, I guess, in layman's term? As far as the true benefits of it? So I think it would be helpful if we clearly laid out that process because the last thing we want to do is to mislead the public thinking that those tax credits, you know, are readily available, but it's a process. You know, certain guidelines you have to meet.
Yeah, that's, yeah, excellent. I agree. That's a great point. Do we, I'm conscious of our time this evening, just request some counsel from the group. Do we try to do some of that right now or do we do that offline and come back together? It seemed to me it'd probably be the, it'd be the latter. Would everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
In other words, try to put some meat on the bones to both Dawn and Liz's points?
I have a question. At a glance, when I look at the chart, is this, the buildings that, the priority of the buildings that we're focusing on, on this pie chart? Or is it the availability of the buildings? Is it, is it a dollar value associated with each of these pie slices? Or is it just primarily low-hanging fruit priority? In a sense, in terms of scale of what should be focused on first. Explain this chart to me a little bit more.
Yeah, I, great question. Lawrence, I think, actually, Liz articulated a lot better than I was capable of. It's kind of a, it's a common framework, I think, is how she described it. So this is essentially our assessment, to use an education word, a common assessment that we're going to use for all of the properties that we're considering. So in other words, each of those properties, the availability was referenced, for example, but each of the properties would be considered via this, this assessment here.
And there would, there would be more than one project within a pie slice? One property in a pie slice?
Right. So in other words, you had multiple of these. So you'd have as many as like 10 of these pies, in other words. And that, so each of these pies would look different. So in other words, the Altria building would look different than Norrell Annex, et cetera. If, folks, if I'm misspeaking, please correct me.
Well, that's not a summary of all of your opportunities there.
Right. Yes, correct, absolutely. So this is...
So each, each property would have a pie chart? And then how would you begin to rank them graphically at a glance? Because again, we're dealing with taxpayers and people my age of 67. And so at a glance, the graphics and the letter is obviously too small, the, on the chart there. So it's got to be understandable at a glance, and I don't think it is now.
Right. No, that's, that's helpful. Thank you, Lawrence. Well, yeah, well said and correct. We would essentially put all that together. We did have, you called, that's been a common refrain, that discussion about how we prioritize the different properties. And, and so this, the objective, one of the objectives, I think, and again, please, anyone jump in and correct me if, if I'm speaking out of turn. But I think one of the objectives for this pie chart is to achieve that prioritization that you just, that you referenced is so important.
Yeah, I think, if, in the paper a while back, I believe it was, Henrico County in the newspaper put a summary of their budgets that they, priority-wise and also graphic-wise in a document in the Times Dispatch. And it was very impressive compared to anything that the City of Richmond did. So maybe your people can find that document, a graphic budget summary for their annual, and I'm sure the Times Dispatch could get, provide it quicker. But the way that was laid out was very impressive and the school board probably could do the same thing. But this needs a little bit more graphic punch.
Excellent points. Yeah, I agree. Well said. Any other elements that should be included here, though? And I apologize, you're right. The text is, it's really small, it's hard to see. Reading left to right, it's market value, cost of rehab, RPS use, opportunity, alternative use, tax credit opportunity, location value and other. Are we missing anything or is we... If so, I don't want to belabor the point.
Yeah, I think, you know, this may be, I think this may help us visualize where some of these properties are. I do think that some sort of rubric or additional documentation to, you know, for generating a final report or set of recommendations would be helpful. But it is helpful to, at least, you know, as we've noted, have an idea of which categories we're going to be focusing on. And then, you know, as we delve into the work, you know, if other things pop up, then I'm uncertain we can be nimble enough to include other, or at least a further discussion of what other means. So thanks for sharing this and I look forward to further discussion on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Absent any, any other commentary regarding the metrics. And what we'll do is I will try to put some more meat on these bones. And then if anybody else would, would care to, please feel free to do the same. And then when we, when we come back together as a group, we can, we can flush all of that out. 1.05... 1.05 was assignment of facilities to committee members or teams. We can do this one of two ways. We can either, we can either do that now, though, because we're missing somebody, we can, we can defer that or we can assign different facilities to folks in absentia. What's, what's the pleasure of everyone?
Hi, this is Cheryl speaking. I would prefer our coming back to meet again with that necessary data that you're referencing right now because in the next few minutes, we have our meeting. So I think it's going to take more than 15, 20 minutes to go through this. So I would prefer that the experts, Mr. Hathaway and his team or whomever would handle that and then bring the information back. Thank you.
Excellent point. Everyone agree with that? Seems to make a lot of sense to me. 106, next date for meetings. When, when is convenient for folks on the call? When is, when is a good time generally? Is there a good time? And if there's not a good time, what's the least of bad time? Anybody have any recommendations to throw out there?
Well, what's the timeframe regarding what Mr. Hathaway, how much time do they need to get the data together that you're referencing? A week or two or where's, where's Mr. Hathaway? I think it's pending what he has in place on his schedule.
I think I can get some of this, Ms. Burke, but I think some of this is going to need a collective effort from other members in the group. And I think the premise was to have each committee member participate to some degree. Am I correct, right, Jonathan?
Right, that's correct. That's right.
Okay.
We will, Angie, what, we have, of course, we've got another, we have a meeting coming up on the 15th, is that right? What's our next time the school board as a whole gets together?
September 14th.
14th. Is that... Is it convenient for folks to meet immediately prior or is that not advisable?
Not advisable. And that agenda is really the 14th?
It's going to be a big one.
Are we meeting on the 14th?
September 14th.
We are meeting on the 14th or the 21st?
September 14th and 21st are board meetings.
Okay, because of the holiday. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So probably the 21st will be our, the time to get it on the agenda per se? Was our agenda's filled on the 14th? And that gives you about three weeks.
Does that work?
If I may, this is Nicole Thompson. Ms. Burke, my understanding is that the agenda is also going to be pretty full on the 21st.
Right. Thank you. Because, thank you.
And I think Liz is waiting for, to jump in here with the recommendation.
Is this just a point of clarification? Is this to have our next VPC meeting or for the VPC to go in front of the board?
Yeah, just the next, next VPC meeting.
My recommendation would be that we meet sometime after the September 22nd, 24th, whatever, end of September, early October. And in the interim, you get us a rubric with the actual... And in the interim, you get us a rubric with actual, the actual weights that are in this pie chart. So we can do a weighted average, give us school, you know, give us a process. And then I'm fine if you want to assign us, you know, maybe one school board member and one community member, two community members per team. You can have Bobby Hathaway, Mr. Hathaway and his team pre-populate the rubrics with the, the qualitative or the quantitative items that we know. And then for the subjective items like brainstorming ideas for how RPS could use it. You know, maybe each of us can take two or three buildings so that we can have a productive conversation in a month.
Makes sense to me. Everybody like that?
So I have a question, question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a realistic timeline for the administration? In lieu of everything that's going on, you know, with the virtual learning? I, I just don't want to set us up and it's not a realistic timeline to address you know, everything we just discussed.
Yeah, good question. It's more important question.
Well, this is Michelle and I, I work closely with Bobby and I appreciate Dawn you raising that. With everything that Bobby is focused on for start of school, even though the, the buildings aren't open, there's putting in place health and safety protocols and such. We most certainly would appreciate any possible flexibility on, on timelines or data for the administration just so that Bobby can be fully focused on, on things. Even this week, it was moving stuff for the new building. So he's definitely an all hands on deck kind of team right now. So whatever consideration the committee could allow would be most appreciated.
So I would just say sometime after September twenty-fourth and, and Jonathan, maybe you can work with Mr. Hathaway and Ms. Udasco on an appropriate timeline.
Sounds good. So, so look, if everybody's okay with the collective wisdom that's been shared the last several minutes. So I'll get with Bobby, we'll identify as we get a little closer, a date, a couple of dates that last week of September solicit of the, the group as a whole, what is, what's, what's best for everyone on the committee. But then also, of course, what will work for the administration. Is that correct?
That sounds great.
All right.
Good deal.
Yeah, last, lastly, and, and I, I'm sorry, Angie, I didn't put this on the agenda and I, I should have. But we had, we had a discussion at the last meeting relevant to bringing on a couple of our friends from the second floor. Bringing on a couple of city council members and or, and not and or, but also I think Ms. Burke recommended the city attorney as, as well. I presume that's still the will of the, the group. Is that, is that fair assessment? Is that the will, will of the group?
So Jonathan, I have a question.
And protest. Yes, ma'am.
So when this was, was in it to the board, so I'm just, this is a, just for clarity, process question.
Yes.
So what, when the board agreed to the scope of the committee and members of the committee, was that a part of the discussion?
No, that's a great point. If we, and what, what Ms. Page is introducing, I think it's really important. We would have to go back to, to your point, Dawn, we'd have to go, go back to, Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong about any of this. But I, I think we would have to go back to the board, the school board as a whole for that to be considered. If, if that's, in other words, if the VPC says, hey, we'd like to add two city council members and city attorney. I, I think it's pretty cut and dry. We'd have to, to Dawn's point, have to go back to the board, the school board to ask for that allowance. Is that?
That, that is correct. And right before Ms. Page said that, I was going to say, you're going to, to add those people. You will have to go back and look and see what the scope it was that this committee was created and who should be on the committee.
Right, right. So given, given all that, and Dawn, thank you for that.
No problem.
Yeah, really important point. Any, anybody want to weigh in on that? Anybody have any recommendations or and or advice?
I'd like to say one thing. I was very impressed with the Ateria Building and that it was set up as a, a nonprofit independent organization that was somewhat independent of schools and the city council. And it gave that a little bit of flexibility. When you, I know you want buy-in from city council all the way through when you want to have to transfer properties. But on the other hand, I was impressed with that one particular slice of the pie and how flexible it was. So sometimes we want as much flexibility as we can get. And of course, we want buy-in, but I, I like the idea of independent flexibility. And again, it doesn't matter to me, whatever the, the, the provider decides, it's fine with me, but I just.
Yeah, thank you, Lawrence. Well, keeping us honest here, it's five forty by my clock. We agreed we'd adjourn by five forty-five partly to allow for us to hop off this one call and get on the other. So if, if I may sum this up, one, yours truly, we'll get with Mr. Hathaway. Oh, thank you. Yes. Do we have a, we do, we have a, we have a quorum now. May we, Ms. Wilson approve the minute, or vote on the minutes, rather?
Yes, you will need a motion.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Ms. Door. All those in?
No, you need a roll call vote because we are electronic.
Very.
Um, Mr. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Door.
Yes.
Mr. Barlow.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Corliss here as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Corliss.
Yes.
Thank you. Your most, the minutes are approved.
All right. All, thank you. Really grateful for you making, making time for, for this discussion. And pray everyone is safe and well. And we will adjourn now and, and come back, come back soon. Contingent on everyone's availability that, that last week in September. But are there any party words for the good of the order? If not, then I'll see my board colleagues in just a few minutes. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks.